Everyone, please rise for the pledge and remain standing. You're going to make nine statements.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everyty and justice for all. The Salamaga City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Waka, the people of the Great Hill, the Seneca People on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaga School District now stands and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all Indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaga City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of Indigenous students. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now administer the oath of offer newly elected. But she didn't make this original oath on June twenty second so that he was able to fill his duty start in July first. Today we'll have an joint in public also. Okay, Christian, if you're right there, can I repeat from tears here, please, you're taking your own.
I, Christian Ryder, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education member from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. According to the best of my ability.
And a good sign there.
And now declare nominations open for election of President of the Board of Education.
I nominate Lisa Ray.
I second that.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for President of the Board of Education? At this time, we'll declare that closed. And we'll need to vote for President of the Board of Education, and that would be for Teresa Ray. But we will do a roll call vote on this. Colton? Early?
Right.
John?
Yes.
Bucini?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
And Ryder?
Yes.
Now, the Board of Education member, congratulations. Can we use emotions and seconds for that actual vote?
Pardon me?
Can we use that motion and second for that actual vote? You nominated her, but we should have also done it for the vote. So can we use?
Yes.
Sorry, don't read my notes very well. Okay, now we're gonna declare nominations open for election of Vice President of the Board of Education.
I nominate Carrie John.
Any, so Carrie John has been nominated for the Vice President of the Board of Education. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education? We'll declare that closed. So we will vote for the Vice President of the Board of Education, and if we can have a motion in a second to appropriate.
No motion.
That's again.
And we will take a roll call vote again. Colton?
I.
Early?
All right.
John?
Yes.
Bucini?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
And Ryder?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Congratulations. And now we will do the oath of office for President, Vice President, and Superintendent. You were a great right hand, repeat. I, Teresa Ray, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education President according to the best of my ability. That's it, right? Nope, you're good. Congratulations. If you raise your right hand, let me see if I can.
Okay, I, Carrie John, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education Vice President according to the best of my ability.
Wonderful. Congratulations, and if you would sign? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, I, Mark Beeler, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent of Schools according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, and if you'd sign. We're all official? Yes, and the Board President takes over at eight thirty-seven.
All right. Thank you, everyone. All right, we need a motion. Well, first, other. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Are there any updates to the agenda?
There are a couple changes. Item ninety, consideration of regular resolutions. Changed the board meetings in August eighth fifteen and eight twenty-two and deleted twelve twenty-six, the December twenty-sixth meeting. Item thirteen G, the tuition rates resolution was revised to eliminate district student tuition. Item fourteen, adjusted a leave of absence date for Leo Ward from six twenty-three twenty-three to six twenty-two twenty-three. The lifeguard rate in item fourteen D was changed from twenty fifty to twenty dollars and fifty cents to twenty-one dollars. And we added item fifteen D to board information, which is the capital project phase three summer report dated June twenty-seven or number twenty-seven, dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay. And we have a motion by Brad, second by Carrie. All in favor? Posed, abstained, motion carried. And we need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of person.
Second.
By Ted, second by Dale. All in favor?
I think.
Posed, abstained, motion carried. We should not be too long. Okay, we need a motion to come back into regular session.
Both of them.
Which by Carrie, second by Dale, all in favor?
I.
Posed, abstained, motion carried. Item nine is our consideration of regular resolutions. So we have item A, which is our official designation, B, which is our authorization, C, our re-adoption of policies, D, our district officer appointment, E, other appointments. Required appointments, McKinnuvento, G, required appointment, neglected, the influence, transition liaison. And these will all be effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So we need a motion to approve the consideration of regular resolutions.
Motion.
So I got a motion by Ted, second by Brad. Are there any questions on any of these resolutions? All in favor?
I.
Posed, abstained, motion carried. Item ten is our communications. Do we have anybody that signed up to speak?
You do not.
Right? And title six, is there anything you want to add here?
Really, really, I'm not gonna be too long about today, just every, you know, the last couple times I was able to give a pretty extensive updates on where Title Six is at, as well as, you know, the website, and I was kind of keeping it all updated. So I just wanted to quickly go over some of the things that we're kind of getting right into coming this year. Again, I stated that in the case, which is the Native American Education Association. So actually, previous to me, we were actually able to set up this amount of money that we're able to break down to seven staff members under Title Six, they did go come October. And that's including some of some of our teachers, like Rachel and Shayla, some of our liaisons, myself, the graders. And so, being that we had those seven, we actually had ten people that were interested total. So we able to break that down and have Title Six cover seven of those people, and so the remaining three, I was actually able to meet with Dr. Beeler this morning and kind of figure out, you know, the a way to be able to get the other three, the knack team like Gabby and Andrea. And whether it's, I'm concerned, there's PD for the first one. So we're gonna kind of work on that together to make this group, that was this group of original ten interested, all go together and all be able to go this year. So I think we were able to accomplish that today, this is great, and we're able to now finish all those forms that it takes, everyone's signatures, get that to the business office, and kind of put that on them now, and should have an update for next month. And with that, though, we, being that it is four days saying, being overnight, we do have to have a Board of Education approval. I don't believe we're gonna have that ready by the twenty-fifth, but hopefully the first meeting in August, we'll be able to present that. NIDEA trip of kind of the details I just explained in more detail. And hopefully have that approved by you guys, and we can take our trip in October. I think, and it's obviously, you know, people know about this, it's the biggest, you know, Native American Curriculum Association in country to be able to send this many people as well as So that was just that. We're also gonna just, the IPC meetings are tomorrow night at six. We'll have sub-trays, we're gonna get through elections and voting, make sure we have a full sixteen, kind of explain a lot of this already, guys. Just letting you know, you know, that's tomorrow night, and come on out and meet with us, and, and, you know, start spending out some money with us, and in the best ways possible, I can every call three for our students. So, other than that, we actually just today as well, I took a lot of time up from Janet. She helped me revamp kind of the new IPC agenda form. It's a really beautiful form. And I know, you know, I take a lot from, from you guys up here, sitting here. I kind of been bothering Teresa a little bit. I think we're gonna meet maybe tomorrow or this week on, on, just kind of pick your brain and get a lot of knowledge on how to run these committees and these meetings the way you guys do, you know, with the motions and all these things the right way. I'm just trying to learn, you know, the best, obviously, unanimous vote for President, you know, today, and I, to be able to chat with her sometimes, it would be awesome for me, as well as Janet and Dr. Beeler, you didn't take your time, no? Thank you, to make sure everything's ready for approach models, presentations, and meeting. That's really, yeah, I didn't want to take too much time up. If you guys had any questions, please, please let me know, and yeah, so keep short today.
Where's N A I E?
So NIDEA is the National Indigenous Asian Association.
Where's it at?
Oh, sorry. It does change every year. Yep, so it's Albuquerque, I suppose.
Okay.
I always threaten to, yeah. I know, I haven't been here.
I didn't say, there is other, yeah, other people from the nation, of course, I'll be there.
Are you going, Tracy? We go on the education.
I'm not going, but the director and a couple of the teacher aides are gonna, so I think there's like four on each other.
Usually it's Michelle and the liaisons.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Next, we have a central office message. Mrs. Magiera is sick, so we'll move on to the Board of Education message. So we can start with, you know, start with Christian as the new guy on the block.
Oh. Yeah, sure. Okay, no problem. I just wanted to thank everyone for having me, and I'm looking forward to working with the board and each and every one of you. I'd also like to thank those that took the time to, you know, come out and support me by giving me their vote, as well as for the budget. Personally, I would like to thank Janet for all the help leading up to this point, you know, getting all set up and setting up some meetings, getting me this device, as well as IT, getting all squared away on my computer and pretty much everything else. Trying to mitigate the learning curve as quick as I can, so I can pick up everything and learn fast. Other than that, I'm excited to be here for the next five years. So thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Tracy?
School, one school year down. Why, where to go? Exciting summer, there's lots of programs, lots of camp. I hope we can take advantage of that and participate. Still glad to be here. Looking forward to continuing to work with such a great.
All right, Ted?
Yeah, just wanna congratulate Christian. You got five years to figure it all out. It gets better after the first year. Just to the two of you, I can just give you some advice. Take it in, ask questions, write stuff down. Everybody's pretty good at getting the answer to you. The, you also have to take a couple courses that the state required you to do. I would, you know, just say take them sooner than later. They do take a lot of time, but there's a lot of information that you learn from them that helps you out to answer even more questions. Other than that, just hope everybody enjoys the summer for what it is. The, we still got a lot of events going on, a lot of programs starting, and looking forward to making it to the summer to the ball to the, another year.
Awesome. Thanks, Ted. Brad?
I'd like to say welcome to Christian. And graduation, guys, and vice president.
Right.
Another term in office. That's all I got. Yeah, I'd also like to welcome first to the board. And to bring some, some of good perspective on some different things, I'm sure. And I'd like to congratulate Teresa and Carrie on their executive positions here on the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I hope all the students and families take take advantage of all the offerings that we do over the summer, the camps and things like that. So that's all I have.
Okay.
Let's do, yeah.
Congratulations, Christian. Glad to have you aboard. Yeah, you're in for a fun ride. Yeah, congrats, Tracy as well. It's been one, almost two months. Yeah. You're in for a fun ride, too. Well, thank you, guys. You know, for T-Raid and myself, you know, thank you for having the confidence in us again. It just adds to more of the, you know, the thankless opportunities we put ourselves in. Yeah. No. But as always, thanks to all of our staff. Not many here tonight, but thank you all. Those who are paying attention, thank you all. You know, getting through the school year is always an accomplishment. We're into summer, summer programming started. Learning never stops, you know, and I hope a lot of people are taking advantage, like Dale said, about what we have going on in the summer. So keep up the good work, everybody, and if anybody else is listening, you know, keep those kids learning, keep them active, you know, let's keep moving forward to the next school year. That's it.
I would also like to welcome Christian. Glad that you decided to run and do a writing campaign and that you were successful in it. So welcome aboard. Also glad Tracy's here, too, because, again, we are, last night, I won't say how old we are. Just twenty-nine, a couple times remote, Tom Tracy. Yes, but again, thank you to everybody for nominating me and Carrie the President and Vice President. It is an honor, and even though there's no pay or stipend with it, you know, there is, I do take the job very seriously, and if there's any ever, any questions, I know Ted did text me a lot during the first year and still texts me now and then for different questions, which if I can answer, I definitely will, and if I can't, I'll try to help steer you in the right direction. I do want to thank all of the school staff that have helped over at Bud's Park preparing for the powwow. I know there's a lot going on. I've been over there, and I am fortunate enough to be on the powwow committee. And everybody has really stepped up to try and help make the event very successful. Anywhere from facilities to security, they'll be by answering my texts on a whim for different issues that are coming up. So it is appreciated because it is community event. I hope people come out. How well, it's great. There's gonna be tons of craft vendors and tons of food, and you'll see the best smoke dancing around. And it's really great if you've never been to come on over. Again, a shout out to all the summer programs that we're offering. There's not a lot of districts that offer what we do, and it's great that we can offer them. So for everybody that is coordinating them, thank you, because it's a lot of work, and just like Carrie said, we, we want to keep our kids busy and involved, and because we don't want them to kind of just give up for the summer. We want them always doing something. So please make sure if your kids, if it's too late to even sign up, or can they still will sign up if there's, we can always sign up, okay, that's great. So thank you to everybody, and I hope there's vacations, everybody enjoys it. I will be out on the twenty-fifth, so Carrie will run the meeting, if you would be so kind. I'll be in Black Lake. So I'd like to say I've been thinking about all of you guys, but I'm probably not going to be, but that's all I have. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Beeler.
Thanks. I made a quick, welcome, Mr. Ryler. Congratulations, Mad President and Mr. Vice President. We are eleven days into the new academic year. A lot of our district office staff and administrators are still wrapping up last year with regard to much of the record-keeping and tracking of students that occurs and planning for this upcoming or current, I guess, year that we are now in, really has been many months underway. As Mrs. Ray mentioned, we have an awful lot of summer programs, both for mind and body. Our high school, summer school started this week. Elementary starts, I'm sorry, it started last week, right? Was this week? Yes, yeah, this week. And next week, our elementary programs start. Athletic camps have started this week. And even as we speak, we have a basketball league in the gymnasium. And this afternoon, we had several different athletic camps going on as well. So we encourage our students to continue to pursue academic excellence, as well as to stay healthy and fit, and come out and see us. We also have community swim, you said basic community swim.
Thirty-two, thirty every day, or Monday through Thursday, the building will open. Our mornings are filled with scheduled lessons. So those are still open. The first session is not, but there is a second session still open. And this, this give her can squeeze, be more into each time slot, eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
Thank you very much. And thank you to our staff who is helping us to keep these programs going over, so.
Awesome. All right. Next, we have our consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda that has our Board of Education meeting minute from twenty-seven, different financial items, a couple overnight trips. From annuals, conferences, impact date conference, some special medical appointment, so. And so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda items. A, L. Sorry. I'm gonna catch the motion in a second. I'm sorry, was that?
Dale, was that right?
You know, I'm Brad. Thank you. I apologize. All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained, motion. Next, we have our whole business. Item A is our policy number fifty-six sixty-one, so we need a motion to approve that policy.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Right, and I.
Posed, abstained, motion carried. Item thirteen, under new business, we have some items to declare surplus, but they're mostly textbooks and a smart board. So we need a motion to declare those items surplus.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions on any of the items? All in favor?
I.
Posed, abstained, motion carried. Item B is our contract with Universal Primary Care. So sorry. Forget the silence, though. Universal Primary Care from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So we need a motion to approve that contract.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Brad. Are there any questions on the contract? All in favor?
I.
Posed, abstained, motion carried. Item C is our contract for workers' compensation, which is a municipal cooperative agreement. So we need a motion to approve that contract dated June twenty twenty-three.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Dale, second by Carrie. Are there any questions on that counter? All in favor?
I.
Posed, abstained, motion carried. Item B is our tower lease contract. So we need a motion to approve the contract. It's a five-year renewal starting July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight for the W N B tower lease agreement.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Brad. Are there any questions on this contract? All in favor?
I.
Posed, abstained, motion carried. Next, we have our Cataragis County contracts for independent evaluations for preschool, he has got children. And Cataragis County for preschool, special education-related services and special education, I can earn services contract. Both start July first, twenty twenty-three and end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. We need a motion to approve the two contracts.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Dale, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Posed, abstained, motion carried. Next, we have our Indian policies and procedures. So we need a motion to approve the Indian policies and procedures.
Motion.
By Brad.
Second.
Second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Posed, abstained. Item G is our tuition rate. So we need a motion to approve the elimination of out-of-district tuition rates for the twenty three, twenty four school year. Motion. Motion by Tracy.
Second.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item H is our income eligibility guidelines. Basically establishing breakfast K through twelve is dollar ten, lunch K through seven to twenty, lunch K through twelve to thirty. Adult breakfast at three fifty and adult lunch at five seventy five. So we need a motion to approve the breakfast and lunch rates.
Motion.
My Ted. Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item I is an agreement between Salamika City Central School District Board of Education. And the Salamika Teachers Association regarding an employee that was this discussed in executive session. The date of this agreement was June twenty nine, twenty twenty three. So we need a motion to approve this agreement.
Motion.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed. Abstain, motion carried. Item J is a resolution dated July eleventh for the Board of Education. Salamika City Central School District, Cataragis County, New York, District, adopting post issuance compliance procedures. So we need a motion to approve the post issuance compliance procedures.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Ted. Just want to explain that this was given to us by our attorneys that we.
Yes, so, right, these detail the IRS obligations that we as a tax gap organization have to follow when interacting with other businesses. So this is a document that tells us how basically what our rules are that was provided to us by some of us.
So we have a motion right now, second by Ted, all in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item K is our Cataragis County Youth Bureau, the Special Needs Program. So we need a. Motion to approve. The Cataragis County Youth Bureau Special Need Program, the data transmission by Cataragis County to the S T A C Special Aids and Medical Medicaid. For twenty three, twenty four school year.
Motion.
All right, Dad, you second that, Christian. Hey.
On the board. All right. Are there any questions?
Motion by Ted, second by Christian, all in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item fourteen is our personnel consent agendas. We have personnel consent agendas actions, number one. Number two is our summer appointments. Number three is our summer bus drivers. Four is our per diem personnel. Five is. Is our personnel acting for approval of school bus drivers. So we need a motion to approve the personnel consent. Approval one, which is items A through.
Motion, second.
Shouldn't it Ted, which by Ted, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item G is our personal action number six for service manager. And then we need a motion to approve the consumption agenda approval number two.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Christian. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, I will abstain, motion carried. Item I is our personnel for extended day enrichment program instructors, our community education and SBA extra duty assignments and rates. So we need a motion to approve all the listed new resolutions.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. And I don't think we have anybody here.
We do that. When we see them, we'll give them the big, or you're welcome.
Guess on that. Item fifteen is our board information and reports. So we have our our second policy reading in fifty six sixty one to approve. We do have our Board of Education's gaming committees, so please review those because. It's your present, you would like to be on. Transportation report, our capital project summary, our upcoming events. Again, we have the. Indigenous education meeting, that's tomorrow at five, five thirty, six o'clock. And where's that held at?
That's right here.
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay. And there will be food, so everybody come on over. And then our next Board of Education meeting will be right here on July twenty fifth at five thirty. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second. My Carrie, second by Dale, all in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, abstain, Carrie, thank you, everybody, for coming.